Okay, good evening. We're going to go ahead and get started. Good evening and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners' November 12, 2019, 5:30 public hearing. I would like to ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the record should reflect that the entire Board of County Commissioners are present at tonight's hearing. And before I begin, I'd like to go over some rules that if you could silence your cellphones and to please, so they do not disturb the speakers or members of our audience. And second, if anyone wishes to testify tonight at our open public forums or at any of the hearings, you need to fill out a yellow slip. So, we ask that you do that. So with that, I am going to start with our first open public forum and see if anyone would like to come up and testify on something that's not on the agenda tonight in our first open public forum. First call, second call, third and final call, and I will close the open public forum. And then I will look to my commissioners who are going to read a proclamation.
Madam Chair, I would like to read this proclamation in the form of a motion. This is a proclamation in the matter of proclaiming December 3rd, 2019 Giving Tuesday. Whereas Giving Tuesday was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism where people give whatever they are able to give. And whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people. And whereas it is fitting and property on Giving Tuesday and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the county of Spokane, Washington. And whereas Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout the holiday season with their time, talent, and treasure. And in partnership with the United Way, Empire Health Foundation, Anovia Foundation, is providing resources to help accelerate the growth and momentum of Giving Tuesday throughout eastern Washington and north Idaho. And whereas Anovia Foundation provides leadership in 20 counties throughout eastern Washington and north Idaho, bringing together communities to help identify local priorities and create solutions to drive community transformation. And whereas Anovia Foundation, for nearly 45 years, has been this region's partner in philanthropy, distributing more than $75 million to transform lives and communities locally, nationally, and internationally since its inception in 1974. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Spokane County, Washington hereby proclaim December 3rd, 2019 Giving Tuesday and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to their communities in any way that is personally meaningful. Dated this 12th day of November, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. I would like to invite Shelley O'Quinn, former county commissioner, who's now our CEO for the Anovia Foundation, to come up and accept the proclamation. And we'll take a picture and then see if you'd like to say a few things. I'm not trying to make this a habit of being on crutches every time I come before the board. It just happened to work out that way. It's great to be with you. You know, I love having the opportunity to work with county government. And in this job at Anovia Foundation, serving 20 counties, I've had the opportunity to work with 20 county governments throughout our region. And it's, we all know this, that county government is so often overlooked. And I just want to say thank you for all that you do because it's so important in what we do every day. So I'm here today and here this evening because we are encouraging everyone to celebrate Giving Tuesday with us. Giving Tuesday was started in 2012 as basically a follow-up to say, okay, we have Black Friday and we have Cyber Monday, but what about taking that next step beyond the commercialization of our holidays and think about giving back to our communities? And so they started Giving Tuesday, and in 2012, it raised $15 million. And then last year, it was over $380 million on that day alone. And so we have come together and a shout-out to our partners, Canopy Credit Union, who so graciously supports the county, Moss Adams, Empire Health Foundation, Avista, and all of our United Ways, as we are promoting Giving Tuesday in our region and encouraging folks to give back in any way that is meaningful to them, to their favorite nonprofit or cause. And we like to say to Anovia Foundation that we are igniting generosity, and generosity is time, talent, and resources. So we say giving back on Giving Tuesday, it can be in any manner of time, talent, and resources for your favorite charity or nonprofit, in arts, education, you know, health, whatever's important to you. So we're encouraging all of you on December 3rd to remember your community and give back in a way that's meaningful. So thanks for having us. It's great to be here. Have a good evening. Thank you. So that will take us to item number five on today's agenda, which is a proclamation.
So Madam Chair, I would like to read into the record in the matter of proclaiming November 15th, 2019, America Recycles Day. The official America Recycles Day is November 15th, 2019, and is the only nationally-recognized day dedicated to the promotion of waste reduction and recycling programs in the United States. Spokane County students are helping to raise awareness locally by creating posters using the 2019 theme, "Recycle Right: Spokane, Here's How." These posters will be on display in River Park Square through November 15th and reprinted in a 2020 calendar that will be shared with county residents. State, county, and municipal leaders can help promote the need to reduce contamination in recycling programs by supporting effective education and outreach programs like the Spokane Recycles Poster Contest and America Recycles Day. Now, therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Spokane County, Washington, do hereby proclaim November 15th, 2019, America Recycles Day. In Spokane County, we urge all citizens to pledge to reduce the amount of waste they create, to buy recycled content products, to recycle right by reducing the contamination in Spokane County's recycling programs. Dated this 12th day of November, 2019.
I will second the motion.
I have a motion in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And so we have Chris Major with the City of Spokane, Solid Ways, to come up and she's going to read, we'll give her the proclamation, and then I think you're going to read the kids' names that have one in their areas. Yeah. Or we can...
Oh.
We'll do lots later. So I think what we'll do is have, we'll do pictures kind of by school?
By school, as they come up. And so, yeah, thank you for this opportunity to recognize these wonderful students this year. This is the 20th anniversary of the Spokane Recycles Poster Contest. This year, we had 235 entries from 20 different schools, and 32 grade-level finalists were selected. And of those, 17 will be announced this evening. That will be reprinted in that calendar. So to introduce to you those student finalists, I am going to call the school and then the students that are in that school. So there might just be one student per school, or there might be multiple. But then we'll get a picture taken. And then we also have certificates for them. So first, representing Adams Elementary School, we have Micah Liu. So if Micah would like to come down, and we'll, wherever it's best to get a picture. If you want to. Yeah, so we can, we'll do it then. So you're the only one for that school. So if you want to stand with those, or do you guys want to stand up here?
Do you want to be there? Let's go.
So Micah's the test case. Everyone else will do the same thing.
Smile.
And then from Farwell Elementary, we have Maya Bloom and Weston Bright. And then we'll have you come back here to get your pictures. From Medical Lake, Halitz Elementary, Eily Fitzner. Is Eily here?
Yay!
Nope. Okay. Then from Holmes Elementary School, we have Ava King.
Yay!
Ava is a two-time finalist, at least two times. From Hutton Elementary, we have Georgia and Russell Fredrickson. If Brooklyn is here. May not be here. McDonald Elementary, we had Elijah Durcock. Elijah, not here. But from Odyssey Libby Center in Spokane, Bryson Lay is here. So Bryson, come on up. Holly Garts. If Holly is here. Or Honesty Whitright. Honesty. From Pioneer School in Spokane Valley, we have several representatives, including Connor Davis. Claire Goslin Harris. Ona Miller. And Anya Newcomb. Awesome. Thank you, Chloe. From St. George's School, Bella Buckner and Mii Shimitsu. All right. Also quite a few representatives from St. Mary's Catholic School, but I think there only may be one or two here. So I'll read off all the names. Hadassa Duff. Kalen Hi. Claire Human is here. Edward Lee. Maria Shug. And Emiliano Torres. And we have Sydney Barker. Julia Morland. All right. Thank you. And then with your indulgence, we'll take a few minutes to get everybody out. And we've got some more announcements upstairs and punch-in cookie and goodie bags for the students, so, and more photo opportunities.
Okay, so we have item number six on tonight's agenda to execute a lease amendment, MOU 18, with CSHCD and stars for, and Spokane Treatment, which is Spokane Treatment and Recovery Services, stars, for property owned by Spokane County's Community Services Housing and Community Development Department located at 312 West 8th Avenue, Spokane, Washington, for the period of July 1, 2018. I think that should be 19. Is it 18? Oh, it's an extension. Okay. It's an amendment. Thank you very much. So for the period July 1, 2018, through December 31, 2020. And Kathleen, if you would want to come give a presentation on that?
Thank you, commissioners. It's Kathleen Trilla, the Director of Community Services Housing and Community Development. And this item is a request for approval for a lease extension. The current lease ends this year. We'd like to extend it for another full year with Spokane Treatment and Recovery Services. They provide assistance to sort of treatment and sobering services to individuals within our community. The fiscal amount for this request is $209,484. Any questions?
No. No, thank you very much. This is a public hearing item, so anyone, I will, anyone wishing to testify would need to fill out a yellow form. I will open the hearing on this, on item number six. First call, second call for anyone wishing to testify, third and final call. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look to my fellow commissioners.
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve lease amendment, MOU 18, CH, CSHCD, and stars four, with Spokane Treatment and Recovery Services, stars, for property owned by Spokane County's Community Services Housing and Community Development Department located at 312 West 8th Avenue, Spokane, Washington, for the period of July 1, 2018, through December 31, 2020.
I will second the motion.
I have a motion in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item number seven to approve, which is a hearing to approve a lease extension with Pioneer Human Services, 18CS2257 bracket two, for property owned by Spokane County's Community Services Housing and Community Development Department located at 703 East Hartson Avenue, Spokane, Washington, for the period of July 1, 2018, through December 31, 2020. Kathleen, I believe, again.
Yes, so this also is a lease extension to carry us through the end of 2020. And it is at our 312 East Hartson Avenue location. This is also referred to as the Phoenix Apartments. Pioneer Human Services manages and operates for the sole purpose, 40 units of apartments for operating for mental health transitional housing program for adults with chronically mentally ill homeless.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing item. I will open the public hearing for this item, item number seven. First call, second call, third and final call. Seeing no one wishing to testify, I will close the hearing and look to my fellow commissioners.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve a lease extension with Pioneer Human Services, 18CS2257, PRIN 2 PRIN, for property owned by Spokane County's Community Services Housing and Community Development Department located at 703 East Hartson Avenue, Spokane, Washington, for the period of July 1, 2018, through December 31, 2020.
I will second the motion.
I have a motion in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That leads us to hearing number, item number eight on tonight's agenda, and I believe Tanya Wallace, our CFO, is going to come up.
Thank you, commissioners. The public hearing tonight is to establish our levies and if we're going to have an increase in those levies compared to 2019. So I have a very brief staff report for you before the public hearing gets started. So why are we here tonight? We're here to talk about three of the county's levies. The county general levy, our roads levy, and our conservation futures levy. Before we get started, it's good to put in perspective where these levies are. What we're really talking about is only the county's levies, not the total levy that is assessed on each property. So a lot of it depends on if you live within a city or if you live in the unincorporated area. When you live inside the city, you only pay two of the levies, the general levy and the conservation futures levies. And in 2019, that amounted to about 10% of your total tax bill. This was $11.93 in most areas. Certainly, the school districts are the big chunk of this, and then the cities. But if you're a non-resident and you live in the unincorporated area, you pay both the general and the conservation futures, but you also pay a road levy for the support of those roadways in the unincorporated area. And that's about 32% of your total tax bill. But you can see your total tax bill is less than if you lived in the cities. So for 2020, and what we advertised for, we're talking about $92.8 million in total levies. This does assume a 1% increase, as well as a $5.7 million levy capacity shift from the road levy to the general levy. This would in effect put us at our maximum for all three levies. So how much more is this than 2019? Well, you can see this table, including the $5.7 million in the general levy amounts to about $7 million more than in 2019. Now, as we've discussed in many of our workshops and our sessions, a lot of that would be dedicated towards one-time costs and capital investments. And then you can see the increases in the conservation futures levy and the roads levy. So if you live in the city, that would be about a 12% increase. But if you don't live in the city, in the unincorporated area, that's a 9.8% increase. But that is also very dependent on how much your own assessed value is. So what does that mean to the rate? Well, the rate, we take those total amounts here, that 2020 amount, and divide it by the assessed market value. Now, our assessed market value in the county has grown more than 10%. It has grown faster than what our budget numbers are estimating to be. And because of that, in most cases, the levy rate is very flat, with only about a 2 cent per thousand increase if you live in a city, or it actually decreases... per thousand increase if you live in a city, or it actually decreases in the unincorporated area by about 7 cents per thousand of assessed value. So, what is the taxpayer impact? Rounded to the nearest dollar, you can see here, if you live in the city, the annual impact. And about $250,000 is the average home still. It's probably about $280,000 in the area. So, see, it's about $5 if you live in the city. But for the non-city residents, it's about a $16 decrease. And really, since that, we're not talking the budget right now. That will come to you on December 2nd. This is just about those three levies. But if anybody needs more information, this is how they can get that further information. So, with that, Commissioners, I turn the hearing over to you.
Any questions for Tanya?
So, could you go back to the previous slide that showed the graph and the trend there? So, a big part of why the reduction here is because this is how new growth increases our tax base, and then that spreads out the cost across the broader base. And so, you can see, as we've seen new development coming into the county and into the region, what that means is that all of the taxpayers will benefit from the additional revenue that that new construction brings to the community. And this is a good example of how that translates to the individual property owner. So, thank you.
And if you go to the next slide. So, the difference is based on that assessed value on an annual basis, so just...
Yes, yes. These are annual impacts.
Okay.
It would be pennies on a per month basis.
Okay, thank you. So, this is a public hearing, so I will open it up for anyone wishing to testify on hearing number eight tonight. Second, first call, second call for anyone wishing to testify, third and final call. So, I will close the public hearing on item number eight. In the matter of considering increasing the tax revenue for 2019, from 2019 forward to 2020 in order to discharge the expected expenses and obligations of Spokane County in conjunction with the general fund, county road fund, and conservation futures. I would look to my fellow Commissioners.
So, to start the conversation, I will, Madam Chair, make a motion that an increase in the revenue from 2019 to 2020 to discharge the expected expenses and obligations of Spokane County in conjunction with the general fund, county road fund, and conservation futures be approved as follows. $566,938.42 for the county general levy, which is 1% increase over last year's levy $5,957,512.07 for the road levy, which is a 23.14% increase over revenue from the previous year's levy of $25,751,207, which represents a 257,512.07, represents a 1% increase, and 22.14% represents a $5,700,000 shift in revenue from the road levy banked capacity to the general levy for any lawful purpose. The actual increase in the road levy will be 1%. However, the Washington State Department of Revenue has directed that the $5,700,000, which will be shifted from the road levy banked capacity to the general levy, be included in calculating the total percentage increase in road levy from the previous year. The $5,700,000 represents a 22.14% of the 23.14% increase. And $20,880.21 for the conservation futures levy, which is a 1% increase over last year's levy of $2,88,820.59.
I will second for the, for discussion purposes only.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and now it's open for discussion.
You want to go first, or you want me to?
You can ask.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, the motion that I made takes both the 1% allowed by state statute for all three funds. And the reason why I made the motion for the 1% is that if we don't take it, then we lose the cumulative, cumulative value of that over the future years and stuff. So, I think it's important that we incorporate that as part of our base for future increases. And then, this also includes shifting the $5,700,000 from the road banked capacity into the general fund. And as we've discussed in other meetings prior to this point, a significant part of that would actually be transferred back into the road fund to help not only supplement the road construction budget, but also to increase the amount of funding that we're putting into roads. I'm suggesting that we provide this additional funding to the road fund because with the recent voter decision to support Initiative 976 and creating some doubt about the state's ability to continue to invest in our road system, I think it's important for us at the local level to make sure that we're doing everything we can to invest in. The largest asset that we own is a county, and that we are good stewards of for the county taxpayers, and that's our road system. So, that's the, that's the logic behind my motion, and put it out there for your consideration.
My, my concern is, I mean, I understand the cumulative effect of the 1%. I just, you know, it's something that I would have just liked to have seen us banked this year. But I just, I want the taxpayers to understand, you've got a county government that continues to hum along very efficiently. We've seen great successes over this, this 2019, and we're going to see some tremendous wins in 2020 as well.
So, and I'm struggling with, with the motion in that, I'm not struggling with the 1%. I think the 1%, you know, as Commissioner French points out, is that cumulative effect that we need. It's one of the ways that we can raise revenues. Our expenses are more than, I believe they're three, just in the general fund, 3.33% increase. I mean, our wages are going up. We don't have enough money in our general fund to actually take care of all the capital needs that we have. And so, hence why we're looking at the shift. And, you know, I believe that we're entrusted to maintain the assets that the county has, and the road system being one of those, as well as the facilities that we have. And so, it's important to have those capital funds to do both of those things. So, I, I do feel that the need for the 1% is there. I'm trying to determine if I want to do a shift of 5.7 million, which is the maximum we can, or if we go down to 4.1 million of a shift, which would keep everyone's taxes at a reduced rate, at that $250,000 level, that the impact on them is, would actually be in, in the city, you know, a negative $2. So, the struggle I have is that, you know, from $2 to $6 or $5, I think, is what you had based on rounding on an annual basis. That's, you know, not that much money, but would make a huge difference to the county, that extra $1.6 million. There's a lot that we could do with that, that money. And so, that's the struggle that I'm having at this point in time.
So, you know, the, and we've, we've talked about this many times, that a lot of the costs that we are charged with covering are costs that really come to us from the state. And I'll give you a good example. One of those increases that we're going to see as pressures in our general fund next year is an increase in the minimum wage. And so, that minimum wage is much greater than the 1% that we're taking here. And so, we've got to then find the resources necessary to cover that increase in, in that minimum wage and stuff. And so, that's, that's just one example of, of some of the costs that, quite frankly, are dictated to us from the state, but then we are obligated to pay for at the local level. And we've talked at a great length about the ongoing challenges with a criminal justice system and the cost imposed on counties, especially as it relates to indigent defense, which continues to, to increase. And, you know, next year, we're going to be confronted with additional legal costs for a couple of the cases that are going to be going through the court system next year. So, that again provides a burden on us. And then, as it relates to the road fund, we, we do have Euclid Bridge out, out in the West Plains that was closed because it was deemed to be structurally deficient. And that imposed a cost, an unbudgeted cost under the county of about a half million dollars to our road fund for next year. And that's a critical bridge because it's the access to the survival school for the support of Fairchild Air Force Base and, and also emergency access to emergency services for all of the citizens out there that got access to their homes through or over the Euclid Bridge. So, I mean, there's a number of things that we are looking at for 2020 that create cost burdens on us and stuff. So, they're one-time expenses in many cases, and so, doing the road shift for one-time cost expense, we're not using the road shift for our general fund for the day-to-day operations. We're using it to cover capital expenses that are one-time expenses. And so, because we're shifting the majority of that in a road fund, I think the roads, again, are our biggest asset. So, what do we do to, to make sure that we're spending what we have available to us to be able to take care of our roads? So, that was my logic to get to the full levy amount.
Yeah, and I think I just would want to reiterate that doing the road shift is, is not something I'm excited about doing. But I think for one-time capital needs, and again, with roads, putting a lot of that back into the road system is going to be important. Since I've been Commissioner, that's one of the number one complaints that I get, is, is the road system and, you know, dirt roads, you know, other county roads. And so, again, maintaining those, which I can say that, you know, we, we haven't had the funds to maintain our dirt road system like we should. And it's, it's, you know, one of those hardships that we've had as, you know, for the last 10 years. We've tried to maintain kind of the best first to keep that in the best shape. And now, I, I feel it's time to spend some of that money to maintain the rest of those roads before they get too deteriorated. And so, that way, you know, we continue to move people, because if we can't move people, that's our public safety. That's, you know, what helps drive our economy is having those road systems that people can move around on, trucks can move around on. So, I do feel that it's very important, especially with, you know, some of the potential issues with 976 passing, that, you know, we're seeing transportation dollars get more scarce from the state at this point in time. And so, I think that it's time for us to look at it from a county perspective that say, we need to take care of our own system, and we need to put some money into that preservation, maintenance of the roads that we have to make sure that they stay there. So, as I said, I am struggling with this, you know, amount. And I, you know, I guess for, for this year, I will, I will leave it at, at the maximum shift amount of 5.7, which will be, you know, a little bit of an increase to city residents, just because of the minimal impact, but it is an impact, so I'm very cognizant of that. Not happy to be making that, but we also are trying to provide services that the citizens, you know, of the county, which the cities are part of the county, that they demand. We hear it every day, they want to maintain. So, I will go with the 1% and the 5.7 shift. The question's been called for, and so, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes two to one. So, that takes us to item number nine, in the matter of certifying to the Spokane County Assessor the amount of taxes levied in 2019 to be collected in 2020 upon the property in Spokane County for county purposes to the general fund, road fund, and conservation futures. And I don't think we have any other presentation on that. Okay. Do I have it as a hearing? It is a resolution. Thank you. So, there is no hearing on this item. It is just a resolution. I'll look to my fellow Commissioners.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to certify to the Spokane County Assessor the following amount of taxes to be levied in 2019 upon property in Spokane County for collection in 2020 for county purposes in 2020 in conjunction with the current expense fund, road fund, and conservation futures. For current expense fund, the levy amount in 2019 for collection in 2020 will be $59,300,000 plus $5,700,000 shifted from the road levy banked capacity, which was not collected in previous years, for a total of $65 million. For road fund, the levy amount in 2019 for collection in 2020 will be $27,500,000. For conservation futures, the levy amount in 2019 for collection in 2020 will be $2,200,000.
I will second the motion for the purpose of discussion.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes two to one. Okay, that is it for all of our scheduled matters. I will now come to our last open public forum for tonight. So, this is for anything that's not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to testify would need to fill out a yellow form. I will now open the open public forum. First call, second call for anyone wishing to testify, third and final call. I will close the open public forum, and that will conclude our meeting for tonight. Thank you.